One. Welcome to the April 12th, 2021 Regular Board of Education Meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Law Day.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Mansell.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Rolowitz.
Here.
Teterich.
Here.
Savage Williams.
Here. I'm going to read this very quickly. Governor Pritzker recently extended the disaster declaration related to the COVID-19 pandemic for all Illinois counties and extending the ability of public bodies to hold virtual meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Based on the current public health concerns, the board president of Evanston Township High School District 202, as head of the public body, has determined that it is neither practical nor prudent to hold an in-person meeting of the Board of Education on April 12th, 2021. All right. So, once again, welcome. Our first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is introduction of tenured teachers. Who's going to start this one?
So, just like I say, a couple of words and then our, in this case, the prime role for Dr. Campbell is the principal, who will actually share with us the names of the teachers who are being tenured. But I always like to remind every year, and I realize that, you know, tenured teachers only come before the board one time to be tenured. So even though I've made this kind of comment before, I've not said it to this group. But, you know, in the field of education, being tenured is a big, big deal. And it really is a recognition of a person's professionalism, their competence, their success in their field. I can tell you that at ETHS, we do not simply hand out tenure because people are here. We are very serious about that responsibility. These would be people who have served now their fourth consecutive year. In some cases, it could be the third consecutive year if we follow the requirements so that they've had all excellent ratings and even prior to coming here and that we're allowed to accelerate that for them. But to be perfectly honest, to get tenured is to really say that the school district is so pleased with what you bring to the district that we are offering a commitment to you, that we want you to stay and make your career in this school district. And if you think about most teachers, you know, a teaching career is 25, 30, 35, even 40 years. And so to offer that kind of a long-term commitment is to really demonstrate that these teachers that we're bringing to you tonight have excelled. And they've excelled to a point that we really believe that this is an important investment in the future of this district and into the educations of generations of students who will come here during the years that they're teaching at ETHS. Now, every Illinois school has the legal opportunity to grant tenure. We're not alone on that. In fact, in most states, tenure can be granted at schools. But I always want to remind people that this isn't just simply tenure at a school, in a school district. This is tenure at Evanston Township High School. This is tenure at truly one of the premier high schools in the nation, one of the premier high schools subsequently in the world. This is actually offering this kind of career opportunity to people who have excelled, not just anywhere, but in the highly competitive and demanding environment of Evanston Township High School. So in my mind, this is a big, big deal. And I'll just offer right now my congratulations and my thrill with the people that we are asking you to tenure tonight. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. Good evening, Board. And as Dr. Witherspoon mentioned, we are just so happy to be offering these names as recommendations for tenure. We'll start with the math department, and I'm going to take my time because I know that many of these staff members, teachers, and their families and department chairs are all watching. So hello to all of you. If you're not watching now, I'm sure you may see it later. But we'll start with the math department with Jose Arias, Kenzo Furukawa, and Jacob Mills. Those are the three teachers we're tenuring in the math department. In special education, Nelly Chaldanian, Natalie Leibolt, Cecilia Rice, Jeanette Timpon, and Amalia Velazquez, special education. History, Quentin Clemmons, Kate Iverson, Amanda Slefo, and Yosra Yahia. Science, Jason Foster, Emily Habbert, and Dr. Karen Johnson. Student services, Megan Goodell, John Perrin, and Christian Sines. We have one teacher that we're tenuring in CTE, and that's Melanie Keating. World languages, Catherine Kelly and Gabriela Perez. Fine arts, Daria McMeans and Haley Sullivan. PE, Victoria Kinzel and Tracy Morell. And lastly, but not least, the English department with Elliot, sorry, with Jody Elliott Schwimmer. Congratulations to all of you, and those are the names that we're recommending for tenure.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. I can say that this has to be one of the real downsides about not being able to be in person because the celebration that we have around tenured teachers is always one of the most exciting, upbeat, affirming experiences for all of us. And just to see your faces would just really be great, but it's great. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon, for that introduction. Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for reading their names so well. And my heart goes out to you. I'm excited. I'm happy. I hope you feel affirmed by this commitment from this incredible, wonderful district that I just am so proud of. I hope you really stay and just be a part of this district. You've demonstrated some pretty high level of talents and degrees of competency, and your commitment to this field of education is so important. So thank you for being here. Thank you for being here and staying through this year especially. And just congratulations to all of you, your family. Your families should be proud. So take a moment and virtually celebrate because this is really great. Thank you. All right. It's hard to move past that. Okay. So we are now at item 5B. We're going to talk about the calendars for 2021 and 22 and for 2022 to 23, the school calendars.
And we have Dr. Keith Robinson with us this evening, and Keith is going to review the calendar recommendations and then will certainly answer any questions you have. So, Dr. Robinson, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So good to see your faces. And I am super excited about the coming week. We've had a lot of activity in the building and we're just thrilled to see more faces. It is my pleasure today to submit for your review the calendar recommendations for year 2021, 22, and 22. That's three times. So with this past, for the next year, we've already submitted the 21, 22 calendar. And we did have a couple of changes. And one you'll see right away was the elimination of semester exams, just in title that was on the calendar. So we removed those. We also noted a non-attended day on the 24th, and we just recognized the December 27th through January 7th change on the submitted calendar. So not significant changes there, but just kind of in title, wanted to make sure that we updated that before we posted it. And also you'll see a proposal for the 22, 23 draft, which is submitted here. But we really tried to model the same schedules that we have in the past. Specifically, want to thank the 202 calendar committee. We've worked pretty diligently with a lot of conversations moving forward. And we've also connected and consulted with our friends over at District 65 to make sure that winter break and spring break were aligned. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the process or some of the days here.
Thank you, Board. You've had a chance to review this. I know it's in the packet. So any questions or comments from the board? Gretchen?
Just a quick question, not so much to Dr. Robinson, but I was curious from the student perspective if Kermea wanted to share, are students liking the looks of this kind of calendar? With obviously the elimination of the semester exam, sounds pretty appealing to me if I were a student, you know, and just the dates and whatever else, starting a little earlier in the summer, getting out a little earlier in the spring, I think?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so we actually just talked about this at our last student union meeting, and the seniors don't have much to say about it, just because, you know, we're leaving. But a lot of the other students, I think there was a little bit of mixed emotions on, you know, no final exams. Because some people were like, oh, my God, we're not going to be prepared for college. And other people were like, well, you know, I think that there is, you know, an added stress that comes with those. So there's a little bit mixed emotions, but I think a lot of people were glad about it. I definitely think, I don't know, I think it depends on what college you go to because not all colleges are going to give you an exam for a final exam. Some colleges are going to give you a project. So going into college, it's not necessarily going to be the same final exams that we would have been given here. But I know a lot of people do also like the schedule, having, you know, the block schedule like we do now. They just think there's going to be more time to learn things in class with your teacher and then less homework because you're going to be getting more content in class. So that's what I've heard from the students so far.
Thanks. That's really great to hear and interesting to hear the perspectives.
Thank you. Other comments? Once again, Dr. Robinson, I was thinking, many years ago, I served on the calendar committees when I was in District 65. So it is no small thing. So thank you for your work on this and to your committee members for pulling this together. And really good seeing you.
You too. Thank you so much. And again, just wanted to give a shout out to the calendar committee. We've done great work in the last couple of years and moving forward. We continue to want to do what's best for our community. So thanks for that opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Okay, so moving on with our agenda, we're at item number 5C. We have an update on e-learning, and there was a quick memo in the agenda. And Dr. Witherspoon, who's kicking this off?
Yes. Well, Board, you know that this has been a standing item on our agendas, but we certainly have a lot to update you on this evening about e-learning. Because we definitely want to talk about the upcoming hybrid that officially starts the day after tomorrow, Wednesday, and tell you again, all the preparations we have been making, how the hybrid is going to function, all of the safety steps that we've been taking to be just extra, extra careful and cautious that we get this right. Then we also, and part of that, by the way, and I want it because it was a little bit of a theme here, is that we see the hybrid as helping us transition from fully remote to what will ultimately become fully in-person. And we should be able to learn a lot in the next coming weeks as we implement this hybrid and as we really look at how our safety measures are working, how students are responding to the requirements that we have in order to be safe, and how the in-person is working in terms of not only in the classrooms, but even within the school and, you know, changing periods and transitions and all of that. Then we want to talk to you about our summer school plan, and we actually have Bill Farmer here. Bill is a science teacher at ETHS, but he has also directed and coordinated our summer school for a number of years now. And it's a big, big job, and Bill has just done a splendid job with it. But last year was a real challenge for him because we were just beginning all of the pandemic issues, and he had to figure out how much of a summer school could we even offer, the remote format and how it might work. This year, we've asked more of Bill to really help this summer school be a transition from the hybrid as we look forward to the in-person in the fall. And so Bill will explain to you the model that we're going to use for summer school and the abundant offerings that we're going to have for students. And then finally, we want to talk to you about the plans for fall. We do anticipate that we should be back to full in-person in the fall. The state superintendent has indicated that that's where Illinois is headed. The governor has indicated that that was where Illinois is headed. And we want to be able to be prepared for a very successful start of the new school year. But we've also announced, and you've seen it, but we want to bring you, the board, and the community up to speed on the plans because ETHS is taking advantage of this pandemic to realize that there's a chance for a real fresh start. And you've heard a lot of folks talk about, when we talk about getting to normal, do we mean going back to everything we used to do? Or do we mean really finding opportunities to invent a new normal that can really give us a leap forward with all that we've learned with the pandemic? And I think you'll hear this evening in our presentation that we absolutely think that there will be a new ETHS and a new normal and an opportunity to take the learning from the pandemic and really do exciting things at ETHS while still maintaining our traditions and our reputation. So Dr. Beavis and Dr. Campbell are going to assist with this presentation as well. And Pete, I believe you're going to kick us off.
Yeah, I get to go first. I'm going to share my screen in a minute, but I think it's really important, just like Dr. Witherspoon said, to contextualize the narrative here. We're starting with hybrid on the 14th. Then we're going to, you know, and that's simultaneous teaching. Then we're going to go to summer school, which will be either you'll have the option of full in-person or fully remote. There will be no simultaneous. It will be one or the other. And then, of course, in the fall, we're looking toward a full reopening, so with in-person instruction. So it's really important to keep that narrative in mind. And now I'm going to share my screen and walk you through, walk everyone through the hybrid, and Marcus will assist on this portion of the presentation. All right. Here we go. And away we go. All right. So just a reminder, you know, hybrid instruction starts on the 14th. It's a bridge between all remote instruction and full in-person instruction. We are very cognizant that families choose remote instruction for a variety of reasons. So one of our guiding principles is that hybrid instruction at ETHS does not penalize or otherwise negatively impact remote-only students. Remember, the teachers are teaching simultaneously in this model. So the default instructional model at ETHS is remote in-person or simultaneous teaching. This means classroom teachers will provide remote instruction with some students in the classroom. Students who opt into, and this goes back to the original language that we've talked about throughout the entire process. Students who opt into the in-person will attend one in-person session for a given course every other week according to a rotating block schedule. In this framework, students who are remote have the same access to instruction by the teacher and engagement with classmates as students who are in-person. If a teacher, we know that some teachers will deviate from the model and provide some hands-on experiences with kids in the classroom, particularly in our CTE courses or our physical education courses. All hands-on experiences, though, in the classroom will be viewed as enrichment. They are ungraded. And of course, all of the safety protocols will apply, will maintain instructional continuity with synchronous instruction and check-ins during the period for those learning remotely, and inform, it's critical that our teachers who opt to do this will inform the department chair in advance and demonstrate compliance with the above requirements. What we don't want is to have students to have two stunningly different experiences, but we do realize that in some courses, if you're in the culinary lab, for example, you're probably going to want to take advantage of the culinary lab. And how do we balance that with some in-person experience and some remote experience at the same time? We have a live learning bell schedule, which is changed a little bit from our e-learning schedule. You will see that AM support, which is from 8:30 to 8:55, will continue to be remote. And you'll see we made some adjustments and modifications to our times, and that was to accommodate for break and travel in between, to provide students with one hour's worth of travel in between. You'll see we're also able to preserve office hours on Wednesdays and Fridays. And we also have our asynchronous Mondays, WildKit Day Mondays, continue in this updated learning, live learning bell schedule, which starts on the 14th. We also have the hybrid in-person instruction schedule, and this is actually posted on our website. You can go in and you can see where it says, you know, we're in week one. So on Tuesday, we're testing. So you'll see that it says that we're testing on both those days. And on Wednesday, periods zero, six, and seven, that's cohort D. And on Wednesday, periods eight and nine is cohort C. And then Thursday, cohort B is one, periods one and two, periods three and five is cohort, and so on. And we have the whole thing in one grid here for easy reference. We've, parents and students and faculty have access to this. But we've also done something, our communications department has done something really, really, really innovative here. And believe me, when I say innovative, we're talking about charts, right? But this is really nice. There's a daily hybrid schedule that students can access and families and staff. So you see, what I did was I pulled the one for Wednesday, April 14th, off the website. And it really just kind of says, you know, what the rotation is, what the cohort rotation is. You'll notice that from nine to 10, period six, cohort D is in-person, and you'll see that it's clearly marked that cohorts A, B, and C are on e-learning for that time. They'll be doing their learning from home and so on. And we have one of these for each day of the school year. They're posted two weeks, I believe, two weeks in advance, so you can click in and see where am I that day. Students can also access their daily schedule through their, my ETHS also has that. So if you, you know, what cohort am I in? Oh, I pull up my app, I look in my ETHS, and it tells me right there, and it tells me what my schedule is that day. One of the things that's very, very important, and for families that are listening tonight, students and staff will complete a COVID self-certification prior to entering the building. Pre-screening includes a temperature check. Please check your temperature and, you know, you'll be asked that question. And just, you know, this again is on our website. How do you locate it? Where's that located? Well, you know, you log into my ETHS. It's a one-stop shop for students. And then you'll see there's a COVID screener on the upper right hand, right next to the student's name, and that takes them into a series of questions that are part of our self-certification process. Our teachers follow a very similar process. They've been self-certifying every time they've entered the building. I know I have been self-certifying every time I've entered the building, and it's the same process for our athletes and our activities. We also have something new to unveil. That's our COVID dashboard, which is brand new. During hybrid instruction, we're committed to transparency in reporting instances of COVID-19 cases as reported to District 202. It's updated, our dashboard is updated weekly on Fridays as of April 16th, when 2021, when school is in session. The dashboard will include the number of positive cases of COVID-19 among staff and students, as well as the number of individuals in quarantine. This dashboard will contain aggregate information and will never reveal the identity of the impacted individuals. This information will be kept private according to HIPAA guidelines. So that's very important, too. We only use that, we would only share in terms of contact tracing. But the dashboard is there. And just some definitions, because, and these are all on our website, you know, we have a definition for what positive cases actually are. I just clipped this from the website. It's there if you want to take time. I'm not going to read it to you, but we do have strict definitions on what a positive COVID case is. We also have a definition of what a quarantine case is as well. Again, very important that we're very clear with what that, what that means. And finally, here, we have baseline data that we've populated on our dashboard. If you were to go and type in COVID dashboard ETHS, this is what you would see right now. And again, it'll be updated on the 16th. You'll see that we have five new COVID-19 positive cases with students. We have 13 students under quarantine. We have zero staff and zero staff members who are positive, new positives, and zero staff members currently in quarantine as of April 9th. So again, we'll be populating this on the dates. You see the 16th, the 23rd, the 30th, and it goes on into May, and we'll continue that into the future. And I think this is a good time for Dr. Campbell to jump in and give us a building and HVAC update and all the preparation that's gone into the getting the building ready, safe and secure for our staff and students. Dr. Campbell? Thank you, Dr. Beavis. Can keep that slide up while I just share a few things. In order to protect the health and safety of students and staff and visitors to ETHS, ETHS has implemented the Center for Disease Control, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and the ISB recommendations for healthy and safe operations for in-person instruction. ETHS upgrades and implements, implemented recommendations can be grouped into following four that are on the screen here. So let's start with HVAC. HHS follows CDC IDPH and ISB recommendations for the HVAC systems in all buildings in order to ensure the health and safety for students and staff. Operations staff have upgraded all HVAC filters to Murph 13 filters. During this upgrade, fans and units were cleaned and new filters were installed to ensure airflow through the filter. And operations staff also monitors the daily calendar of event for classes at ETHS to ensure that the HVAC system runs at least two hours prior to students and staff arriving, and it will continue to run for two hours after staff and students leave or after building occupation. The building automation system that usually runs our HVAC systems at ETHS is monitored to maximize airflow through the HVAC systems and to ensure that much external air is possible is brought into the HVAC airflow. ETHS also maintains a regular cleaning schedule of ductwork.
ETHS also maintains a regular cleaning schedule of duck work that happens to be on a rotational yearly basis. In classrooms and offices, ETHS operations staff have ensured that supply and return vents are present and has supplies HEPA filters to locations that do not have both vents. We've only found one in the hundreds of offices and rooms that are around here. And, um, that room has fan and two HEPA filters in it. Spaces do not have, that do not have an HVAC system such as the gyms and field house have exhaust fans that run at all times during building occupation. The air moved by the exhaust fans is replaced in these locations with air from outside or by the air that has been gone through the, gone through the filters. Operations staff have also cleaned the vents in those rooms. Staff are encouraged to open windows, uh, as they feel comfortable. And, um, we are, you know, we instructed our, our staff and teachers to be able to do that, but also to, to close them when, when they're done. And air sample testing for COVID and results, um, uh, have also been done. Uh, in addition to the life safety inspection from the North Cook Regional Office of Education, ETHS contracted with Midwest Environmental Consulting Services to complete air testing for COVID in ETHS's main building, the day school and the transition house. ETHS, uh, on February nineteenth, ETHS had its annual life safety inspection conducted by the North Cook Regional Office of Ed- of Education. March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, Midwest Environmental Consulting Services conducted air samples uh, of testing throughout ETHS's main building. And on March twenty-fourth, Midwest Environmental Consulting Services conducted air samples for testing at the ETHS day school and the transition house. Setup, ETHS continues to ensure that all desk tables and seats for staff and students are at least, at least six feet apart. Classrooms have been arranged to allow for maximum number of students and desks and tables while maintaining social distance in every direction. Also, desk and tables have been arranged in columns and rows so that desks face in the same direction or all desks face away from each other, uh, such as facing the walls, um, of the room. In classrooms that were, have fixed seating such as computer labs, uh, or theater, staff will ensure that those students uh, are at least six feet apart and are all facing the same direction. Staff offices have also been arranged for social distancing and shared offices where six feet of distance could not be set up. Staff have been provided an alternate location to work that ensures six feet of social distancing from other staff. Common areas at ETHS such as the main lobby and the atrium have been marked as closed for safety reasons. And staff will not allow students or staff or anyone to congregate in those spaces. Uh, ETHS has deployed the following measures in, in the buildings to protect staff and students. Floor signage and hallways encourages people to keep moving and to keep foot trapping, foot traffic flowing on the right side of the hallways. Stairwells in the building have been identified as one-way up or down. And signage has been placed at each stairwell to indicate the direction of the stairs. Uh, cones and flags have been placed, uh, in the center of the hallways. Yes, all one point, um, all four miles of hallway have cones and, um, flags and so that people can walk on separate sides. Uh, there are stand here decals in designated spaces. Building guidelines and signage, uh, that mandates, uh, wearing mask and informs people in the main building to maintain social distancing, to practice hand hygiene and to keep moving in the halls, to stay right of the halls and to take the stairs and leave the elevators available for those who need them have all been placed at the entrances. So we have reminders everywhere of the protocols, of the safety protocols and the mitigation measures all over the school. Cleaning protocols. ETHS has always maintained a clean and healthy building. ETHS operations is implementing, implementing more intense cleaning and sanitizing protocols as the school reopens for in-person instruction. Classrooms and offices continue to be cleaned and sanitized once daily by operations staff at the conclusion of the school day. Uh, and that cleaning includes an emptying of garbage and recycling. The boards are wiped down. They're clean and sanitized, all desk and surfaces and all high-touch surfaces. And, and spraying the sanitizing mist, mist, um, mist, mystic things that you spray, um, in the, in the rooms for that. Can't say that word tonight for some reason. Uh, PPE. PPE is a critical component to ensure that the health and safety of students, staff and visitors at ETHS. Mask wearing at all times is mandated at ETHS except when eating or drinking in designated areas. Hand sanitizer stations have been installed throughout the ETHS hallways and in locations such as entrances by time clocks and other high-touch areas. ETHS has installed Plexiglas Berry in offices, classrooms and other public areas to protect staff that work in these locations. ETHS will provide PPE to staff, students and visitors as needed. Each classroom at ETHS is supplied with a PPE kit that includes extra masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, sanitizing spray, paper towels and, um, um, other items. Uh, offices at ETHS can also be provided with those PPE kits. So, um, we believe that we are following all of the appropriate mitigation efforts, uh, as outlined by CDC IDPH uh, and the, um, uh, Illinois and ISB. So, um, that is my portion. And I think I'm going to hand this back over to Pete so that we can talk about summer school.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Marcus. Uh, next up, uh, Bill Farmer is going to join us and he's going to provide us, uh, with an overview of summer school. Again, keeping in mind the broader narrative of the transition, um, from full e-learning to hybrid to summer school, which Bill will talk about, and then to, to our fall planning for a full reopening. Go ahead, Bill. Thanks, uh, for joining us this evening. Appreciate you being here.
Sure. Uh, thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Bill Farmer. As, uh, Dr. Witherspoon mentioned, I teach science by day and plan summer school at night. Um, so you caught me at the right time. I appreciate everybody's patience because I know people are anxious to know what's going to happen over the summer. And trust me, I've been anxious all year to know what's going to happen over the summer. And all I knew was that summer school was going to happen from June third to July fourteenth. Um, and I was kind of waiting for guidelines to be updated. Unfortunately, we got a big, um, round of updates from CDC and IDPH and ISB just before our spring break, which now allow us to know with confidence how we can hopefully proceed, um, with our summer school programming. So I'd like to just give you an overview. Um, a big communication went out to all families, um, of current students. Uh, and then also to incoming, uh, ninth grade students on Friday. So they've all been digesting this information as well. So I'm going to share my screen. Just to walk through a couple of things. Um, so I think the most important question that people are asking is what is summer school going to look like? And, um, now as we've talked about, we know that we can, um, safely transition to more in-person instruction over the summer. Uh, and there's a few reasons for that. Um, typically when students are taking summer school, they're part of a single cohort because they're taking just one class. Um, and that makes a big difference because we're not dealing with students transitioning through the hallways to go to multiple classes. So, um, as we look to this summer, the majority of our courses are going to be offered in an in-person format. And that always comes with the caveat, um, that in-person courses could be subject to adjustments in response to changes in health and corn, uh, health guidelines and quarantine requirements. Um, and we've developed a plan to kind of help us shift from, you know, a partial in-person, uh, component where fifty percent of students rotate through every day. And it's a little bit easier for us to work with because summer school classes can have an instructional block of two and a half hours to five hours to full all people in class. And if necessary, you know, we have become experts at remote instruction if that becomes an option. But, you know, right now, everything looks pretty good. And so our plan is to, to operate with daily in-person instruction, um, for the majority of summer school classes. We recognize that the, that as the vaccine rollout continues and, and we see that teenagers are now eligible, um, sixteen plus. Uh, we know that several, many of our students are not, um, in that, um, demographic because we serve students, uh, fourteen and fifteen as well. Um, so there will still be some fully remote options, um, for students to take. Um, depending on the circumstances, students will have the option essentially to choose in-person instruction or fully remote. And I think as Dr. Beavis mentioned, we're moving away. Um, you know, we're moving into a simultaneous hybrid instruction for the rest of the school year. But we're moving away from that component because we know that in-person instruction is the best mode. And we want teachers who are doing in-person instruction to fully focus on the students who are there in person. And if students choose a fully remote option, we are well-equipped to provide, um, strong, robust, fully remote option. So, um, students will know what the format of the course is when they choose the course. And there won't be any switching in between. You kind of make the commitment, um, when you sign up for the course because that's how we're going to staff things for summer school. Um, so I would like to talk about welcoming the class of twenty twenty-five because I think one of the most heartbreaking components of summer school last year was that we had to cancel all of the programming for our incoming freshmen. And as somebody who teaches a lot of freshmen in my biology classes and had been involved with summer, uh, transitioning programming, uh, for our freshman, incoming freshman class. It was hard, but the only decision at that time, because there was no way for us to equip students with the technology in time to be able to provide remote instruction. Um, but now we have a new plan for this year because we know we have a lot of students who have, um, experienced mostly a year of fully remote instruction in eighth grade. And we want to get them ready to transition into ETHS in the fall. Um, so we've created, uh, a program called Prep to ETHS, which is basically a fusion of all the best programming that we used to offer, uh, in previous years to our incoming ninth grade students. And the idea is to really integrate some transition programming as well as some previewing of the curriculum that they're going to experience when they come into the fall so that everybody has a common experience as they, uh, get ready to walk into the hallways of ETHS, uh, at the end of August. Um, and what we're really excited about with this too, is that the course, there's no registration or tuition fees. We want to maximize access to this programming. Uh, we will be able to offer an elective credit for students that participate in this course, uh, and it will be a pass fail course. Um, and then just so that you understand, we did have to modify the schedule because we anticipate kind of record numbers of incoming ninth grade students who want to participate in this programming. Uh, and typically we do have about fifty percent of our incoming ninth grade class participate in summer school, but our um, estimating is that we could have seventy to eighty percent of our students. So we had to, um, be very thoughtful about the structure of the programming, um, and maximize flexibility for families and students. So the Prep to ETHS course will kind of operate independently, um, in a two-week-long eight-day format, Monday through Thursday. Uh, and they'll have a slightly different start time, um, compared to the other students so that we can also manage the flow of students as they come into summer school. Um, families have already received information. There's three options, um, for them to, um, rank in terms of their preferences. Because this course is free, we're trying to provide equitable access. So, um, families are submitting a course request form right now through April twenty-second. And then we'll do our best to accommodate families, um, top requests in terms of the timing. But ultimately we do have to spread out the course over the entire, um, window of time that we're going to operate the programming. Um, for our current students, you know, we tend to offer courses in three different categories. Academic recovery, um, which is when a student maybe fails or earns an incomplete needs to make up a course. Um, all of these classes will again be offered with no registration or tuition fees, um, for these courses for twenty twenty-one because we want to maximize support. Um, registration for this will also be streamlined through the students counselors because they'll be able to advise students in terms of what courses make the most sense, uh, for them to take this summer as they prepare, um, for the fall. Um, we'll continue to offer enrichment programming, which covers a wide variety of courses, um, where we invite students to participate in either reading enrichment, math enrichment, extended school year opportunities, ELL enrichment. Um, and again, these, uh, enrichment courses again will, for this year will have no registration or tuition fees to maximize access to make sure that students, um, who could benefit from this programming, um, would be able to participate. Uh, and then finally we have academic advancement. And this is where we're also excited to be able to restore, um, uh, many elective opportunities for students who are just optionally looking to get back into school, take a class for fun, um, get, get ahead, uh, on an academic credit. Um, and so for these classes, you know, um, there will still be registration and tuition fees. And as always, we offer financial assistance um, to any of our students to make sure that they have access to summer school if cost becomes an issue. Um, so the, the summer school dates generally for our current students, remember, this is slightly different than uh, the programming for the incoming ninth grade students. Our first day of summer school is slated as Thursday, June third. Uh, and most courses are going to operate in a twenty-six day format. Um, because that's the best in terms of us being able to space students and guarantee that we can offer these in-person, um, courses. Uh, there will be a few limited thirteen-day course options, um, where they might only attend one session or another, which when you look at this schedule, you'll see kind of the breakdown of session one and session two. Uh, this is also going to be something that I know, um, my own students have been kind of adjusting to this later waking up schedule. We are going to move back to an earlier start, a normal start time for school. So teenagers will have to work on adjusting that, uh, sleep schedule, which I know is sometimes hard to do. Um, but one of the challenges is that we know we can't offer, um, lunch. And so we're trying to get as much of the programming completed in the morning. Uh, and then we're going to offer grab and go lunches because we won't be able to, um, manage the in-person lunch experience for the number of students that we anticipate in our summer school programming. Uh, so students will have to practice setting multiple alarms, getting to school on time. But it'll be good practice for the fall. Uh, and I'm sure parents will appreciate that their child is not submitting homework at four AM. I get those little notifications when I wake up every morning for my own classes and just, I'm amazed at how late, uh, our teenagers are staying up these days. Um, just one more piece of information that's a little bit new, um, for families, uh, and students is just in terms of how we register for these academic advancement courses. Um, in the past, you know, we would have, um, released the course selection guide. And then we would have announced a time and a date when the web store would open, when families could log in at eight AM and sign up, start signing up for classes. Um, because we're not sure about the level of interest and we also want to maximize equitable opportunities for students uh, to at least take one course for academic advancement. Um, we're adopting our course request process, which many of our neighboring high schools do when they approach, um, summer school opportunities for enrichment. Uh, and so basically what will happen is, um, we keep, I'm actually adding courses like day by day. Um, we're going to publish, um, the course selection guide this Wednesday on April fourteenth. Um, so that students can kind of look through all the confirmed options. On April fifteenth, families will get another email alerting them to the fact that the course request form is now open for students and families. Um, students will be able to rank as many courses as they would like from their top preference, you know, all the way down to their tenth preference if they'd like. Um, and then that form will close on April twenty-second, um, at which time we'll, um, uh, work some magic with the IIT team to kind of determine, um, what course availability and how that works. And then we'll notify families on or before April thirtieth, um, of the course, um, that they are able to enroll in. And then for those, again, this is just for the advancement courses, and then those families will be able to confirm their registration through the web store, um, as they have previously. So that, that is a little bit of an adjustment, um, to the programming. Um, and then I just did, did want to share, and this was communicated in the email to families as well, all of the elective opportunities that we're restoring and operating. Um, most of them are in an in-person format. We have, um, selected a few of them to operate remotely. Um, and then some of our partnership programming is fully remote. Um, and so this list may grow a little bit before April fourteenth, um, but this just kind of represents, um, the course opportunities that will be available um, to students, uh, to complete. And so, um, all these advancement courses, um, are just for our current ninth through twelfth grade students. And then there's a few courses that are only for current tenth through twelfth grade students. Um, so that's important to note as well. Um, and I do just want to give a shout out to the communications team because while I've been trying to evolve these plans, they've been really great about, um, translating things and getting communications to families as quickly as we know the information. And so I know folks were eager for the information. So we worked really um, hard last week once we returned from spring break to get, um, this communication out to families as quickly as possible. So with that, um, I'll open the floor to any questions, or I don't know if, uh, Dr. Beavis wanted to go back to questions on other things, but I can entertain questions about summer school at this point.
All right. Thank you, Bill. That was a very great, thorough, um, presentation. Really exciting. Lots going on this summer, man. Going to be busy. All right, board. Um, any questions about summer school or, um, or any of the presentations that we've had?
Yeah, hi. I have a couple of quick questions. So first of all, thank you both and all the many people behind you that put all this work together, although it sounds like Bill's doing it himself at 4:00 a.m. So sorry about that, Bill. But I have a quick question about the dashboard, and then I have a summer school question. So I'll start with summer school, Bill. So maybe I'm just not understanding, but the freshman, the prep for E T H S, which sounds awesome, does that mean that an incoming student can only take that? Like, they wouldn't be able to take a, an enrichment course of any kind? Or will that be folded in? Like, if they need a little reading or math kind of prep, will that be part of it?
Yeah, and that's a good question. And that will be the only programming. Remember that last year, we canceled all programming for incoming freshmen. So we are trying to acknowledge that our current ninth graders hadn't had any opportunity for summer. And so we're trying to hold some space for them to take the elective courses that they maybe would have taken last year. And we'll build capacity so that our current incoming ninth graders in their future years will also have those opportunities. But knowing that we wanted to get as many incoming ninth graders into the school as possible, it was best to streamline into a two-week program to kind of cycle them through. And we were still able to offer them that elective credit, which kind of just gives them that leg up before they even walk into the door. They've got a credit towards their graduation, which we think is a really exciting thing to offer.
Great, thanks. So maybe I'll ask a follow-up to Marcus or Pete or others. So does that mean that some of those incoming freshmen who in the past might have done some kind of reading prep or math prep, are doing something different in the fall? Or kind of how are we bridging? Because summer school often is used as a bridge academically. So I'm just curious how we're, I know you're already thinking about it, I'm sure. But just what does that look like? Or what are you thinking about even?
And I can jump in a little bit to the Prep to E T H S. E T H S will be kind of include some academic previewing for all students. So it will be tailored. So I know a lot of people are used to access E T H S. And so Prep to E T H S is kind of like a fusion of our Prep to Geometry, Prep to Humanities, and Access E T H S altogether with some other components. And then we are still doing some targeted interventions for students. So we still are going to offer our reading, math, and the social context programming for incoming ninth graders, which we did actually offer remotely last year in a very condensed format. So we are being very mindful of kind of looking at where the students are. So some of the incoming ninth graders may be invited to some additional supports based on where they're at in terms of their test scores.
That's great, yeah. I just think of all years, right? This would be one that we would want to stay focused on that. Great. And then Pete, I just wanted to ask about the dashboard. You mentioned that, or you even showed us that there's case counts. But since we aren't doing, and we can't afford to do, full-scale COVID testing of every student and staff member, is that just self-reporting? And, you know, kind of, yeah. So I just want to be clear about what that is and isn't for folks that might be watching.
Yeah, that goes to the definitional, and that's actually on the webpage. So a positive indicate, I'll just read it to you. Because positive case indicates that students or staff members have tested positive for COVID-19, and the district was notified that week. This does not mean the individual is physically at school on the date of the notification. And then it goes on to exclude, you know, our exclusionary, you know, how we exclude and what we do for 10 days and that kind of thing. And so we do receive notification, if there's contact tracing going on, we will receive notification from Department of Public Health. When we receive notification, we, we also, like, let's say we receive notification from an individual, we also then initiate the contact tracing through our, with our nurses and the Department of Public Health. So it's all part of the same process. So yeah, we don't, we don't test, we don't have a screener. But what we do have is, you know, the Department of Public Health and our own self-reporting.
I just, I just might mention that we have a very good record of experience with that, because that's what we've been doing in our athletic programs and then our extracurricular programs, like the band and the like, basically all year long. We had quite a bit of athletics in the fall. And then, you know, the second semester, the governor and the state opened that up, you know, quite a bit. We probably had 16, 1700 students coming in. And, and so the self-screening has been very, very successful. And then we've worked with people, if they need to, you know, if they're symptomatic, or if they need to get tested, or if they've been in contact with somebody. And then we work with our nurses and, and, and in this case, the athletic director, but it would be, you know, others here in the school. Then we work closely with the Evanston Department of Public Health to determine what the right protocol is to deal with that particular situation. There's contact tracing, decisions are made. And then we know, for example, if quarantining is necessary. If so, who needs to quarantine and the like? So, so you've read about some area schools that have had some big outbreaks in their athletic programs. We have not. We've certainly had some COVID positives, no question about that. And, and clearly, we've had to do some quarantining, no question about that. But because we've been having this going on, you know, with a lot of students interacting with one another, what we have found is that system really, really works well. It doesn't mean that we won't have COVID cases. Of course, we'll have some COVID cases. I mean, this is a virus, for heaven's sakes, you know. I mean, there are so many variables about how people get exposed and, and, and get the virus. But what we're concerned about is making sure that we have protective measures in place and that we can get on top of it right away and, and identify it and, and, and limit the potential spread. And so far, it's really, it has worked.
Can I just add one thing to that, Eric?
I was going to add something to Pete.
You want to go first? You go first. And then I bet we might be adding the same thing.
You probably are. Our, our school-based health center will be engaging in COVID tests for students who are symptomatic with the PCR test, not with a rapid test. And so should those cases come back positive, those will be added to the dashboard, as well as if there's any students who have had a high risk exposure, that will be added to the dashboard. And any staff member who tests positive, HR will be working with the public health department. And those numbers will also be a part of our, the reporting that we engage with the dashboard.
Thank you.
Actually, I just had a follow-up question. Through your contacts with, you know, state education and health officials, is there any information about any kind of a push to get our, you know, at least half of our students are eligible for vaccines as of next week? So is there going to be any effort throughout the state or the county or in the city to push for some of our older students to get those vaccines?
Hopefully, in a way that happens faster than it did for teachers, given that we actually never had a coordinated vaccination event for them in our own city. Sorry.
No, you're exactly right. And, and so I've already been in touch with our, our mayor and, and our Department of Public Health. And I've already indicated that we want to host a mass vaccination site here. And actually, we would like it to be with the Pfizer vaccine that is approved for all the way to 16-year-olds. And, and we're, I won't go into the details, but Mary is talking to some other sources, where there might be some outside source in order to possibly be able to mobilize this. But I can tell you that it's, it's been very different in Cook County than, than in other counties. School districts in Lake County, for example, have had very different experiences than we've had. But the other is, we have our own Department of Public Health. So, so we're, while they're dependent upon the state and Cook County to allocate doses to them, basically, we're told, "Talk to your own Department of Public Health." And, and they are doing everything they can to get out all of the doses that they have available to them. So it's in the works. Indicate, we have started discussions. But frankly, it was in the works about a mass vaccination site for our staff. And as Ms. Livingston pointed out, you know, we finally patched together something with different contacts, and we got something. But, but we were never able to fully accomplish, we fully accomplished it, but not what we had in mind, which we wanted to host a, a, a mass vaccination site right here. And that never materialized. We finally had to put partnerships together to get something done. So that's a long answer to say, we want to do it. We've, we've, we've initiated conversations and desires to do it. But I will tell you now, you know, that we might get that in the very near future. You know, it would surprise me if we get it in the near future.
Well, I don't know if anybody else saw the news, but there were, I think, 160 Northwestern students who were vaccinated in the evening hours, weirdly, with a pile of supposedly excess vaccines that came from a health department that I don't have any idea whether it was Evanston's health department. It wasn't, yeah, I have no, no reason to say that. But, you know, it just, it, it strikes me again that the distribution has been far from logical or coherent in the distribution. And I, you know, perhaps I'm not privy to the information that, but that, that seemed like a really strange way to distribute vaccines to me.
Just seems like at E T H S, we're right in the center of town. So we could have really provided an opportunity, not only for our faculty and staff, but for the community. And I just kept waiting and anticipating this, for this to happen. And, and it has really been so disappointing that it hasn't.
I want to say, you know, I, considering all things, transition and presidential leadership, and, you know, getting new leaders in the White House, since that has happened, a lot has opened up in Evanston in terms of the vaccine. So just, you know, just being on the opposite end, what I've seen prior and what I'm seeing now, you know, it's, it's happening rather quickly, maybe not as, as organized and quick as we would like it to happen. So that gives me hope that it will come down sooner than we think. But we're still playing catch up. And I think we have to be mindful of that. And as Eric stated, you know, we are a, a community, whether it's a blessing or it's a curse, to have a public health department. So that is the challenge. That's the sticking card. And, and I've had several conversations with elected officials, both, you know, our Congresswoman and our state representatives. And they have been pushing for us. So this is, this is not an easy feat, but I, but I'm hopeful that things will, will start picking up, because they already have. They already have. And, and, you know, many of us don't see it, but, but I've seen it, and it is, it's happening. So, you know, I just, I don't want, you know, there to be this impression like Evanston is not really doing what they should be doing. I think they're doing what they can. And what happens sometimes, Gretchen, because this happened at the YMCA, sometimes you get these extra doses, and within moments, they have to be used. Or else, you know, they have to be thrown away. So I wouldn't be surprised to hear that Northwestern got a call after a certain situation, and there were many doses left over. And so that opportunity was given to them. Come quickly, we have this. If you have, you know, people that want it, and that's how it happens sometimes. You know, they just don't know, you know, if everybody's going to show up or if they're going to miss count or whatever. So, and sometimes you have to respond quickly. And, and that's happened at the Y, and it happened in District 65. So at least they're reaching out, saying, "We have extra." And, you know, we want to give it to those that we know need it, because they don't always know. So I just, I don't, I just want to shout them out too, because they've been working very hard for Evanston, so.
I agree. I, you know, I think the city has really been trying everything they can possibly do to get the vaccine and get it to us. And you mentioned the President Monique, and I want to remind everybody, President Biden has said, by like this, "Mayor June, every American who wants the vaccine will, will have access to it." So, and you know, that's 16 plus and up. So, so think about the coming summer, when, when, you know, and, and I think we've learned to trust President Biden, when he tells us that everybody who wants that vaccine is going to have access to it. I really believe that, that we can be very optimistic about this coming summer.
Yeah, because the original plan was that our children wouldn't receive it for months. I mean, they were not supposed to be receiving it as soon as they are. It was going to happen in the winter months, so, you know.
So that is encouraging, yeah. That, that's, yeah, that's very, very encouraging. And you're right, this, this administration really had to start from square one, really. So he's really trying to, to do this. And he's been very clear, he's trying to do this.
Can I add one more thing to that, the response so far? I think that, you know, as, as we play catch up as a community, and as we, you know, actually, you know, begin to vaccinate students who are 16 and up with the Pfizer, I just, I don't want us to lose sight of what we all have in, in our control and what is critically important to keeping our school open for students. And that is accurate and honest self-assessments on that screener every day. When asked what we learned from other districts, we learned that dishonesty closes schools. That's what we've learned. So please, if you're watching this, or if you could reach out to folks, be honest with that screener. If you're, if you fail that screener, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a shameful thing. You're doing your part staying home with that, right? It's critically, critically important and, and so important to, to, to really take that quite, quite seriously. And in terms of reporting illnesses, you know, students, you, you may be excited to come in, and parents, but, you know, if, if your student is ill, having any COVID-19 symptoms, has been exposed to COVID-19 or has tested positive, please stay home and follow the guidelines. It's critic, I can't underscore that enough. Vaccines are going to be great when we get them for our kids who are 16 and up, and for our kids who are 16 and younger, hopefully. But right now, what's in our control is being honest with that self-assessment each day.
Can I, can I also add? And maybe because I've been doing this since last June at the Y, the protocols are critical. Not only, you know, self-assessing and staying home if you're not feeling well, but the protocols that are being set in place by the high school, however uncomfortable and unfamiliar, and, you know, that they might be, they are necessary in order for the schools to stay open and for people to stay well. It's not even about the school staying open or closed. It's, it's more about the health and well-being of every human being that's inside that building and that you may come in contact with when you leave. You have to have that mask on, you have to practice social distancing, you have to wash your hands. All those things have to continue in the building in order for us to be successful in this process. So, I mean, that, and it's going to be difficult. It's going to be challenging for everyone, but, you know, it's in place for a reason, so.
And, and you know, Monique, that reminds me of what the Medical Advisory Board told us just, just last week, that with the proper mitigation, with the masks and the social distancing and the hand washing, and, you know, following those protocols brings everyone to the level of vaccination, which is extraordinarily powerful and just underscores exactly what you're talking about. So, so, and Marcus, I guess that's a good segue to the medical advisory piece.
I guess so, thank you. You know, we've assembled a team of, of local pediatricians, doctors, that have been advising us for the past, I want to say about three weeks or so now, maybe even a month. And the information that we have gotten from them has just been outstanding. They were, they volunteered to come and to E T H S, virtually, of course, to speak with our staff who maybe were vaccine hesitant, had questions about this mitigation measures. And I just want to thank them for showing up for our staff on Friday, hosting an hour-long session, answering lots of questions from teachers and staff members about various things. about various things related to this, this virus. And so it's, it's been a joy to be able to partner with the doctors and to get all of the information and to, to hear them speak as parents of ETHS students and speak as Evanston residents and really be appreciative of the work of our teachers and the work of the district during this time. And also help us to open safely. It's been a remarkable experience for us.
Wonderful. Great. Really good to hear.
I had a question about, and I'm not sure if you all mentioned this, but in terms of credit recovery or any other learning that would normally happen outside of normal school hours during the day. Is that going to be in person or remote?
Yeah, those programs will still be, the, if you're asking, the adult school program will be on a hybrid as well. If those students have signed up to do hybrid, otherwise they'll be continuing to do their programs remotely.
Thanks, Monique.
And because Bill talked about it, and we certainly have those components in the summer school programming. So there'll be a really aggressive effort to get the students who need that kind of assistance and making up and catching up opportunities in the summer. And as Bill said, we're going to identify and go out and recruit kids. We've done that before, by the way. It's not brand new. But, but, but we're really going to be making contacts with students that we have identified who, who need that extra support and, and, and that extra opportunity to catch up. So that'll be a big component of the summer school programming as well.
Yeah. And just so you know who those doctors are, I didn't mention their names and I apologize. It's Dr. Amy Crowe, Dr. Sharon Robinson, Dr. David Soglin, Dr. Leslie Calderelli, and Dr. Perel Gupta.
Thank you. Gretchen, let's hear it.
I didn't know, were, were you going to talk more about fall? I don't, I had a question, but it's.
That's the, that's the next component. We made it through two parts of this presentation and that's, that's the third part.
That's fine. Go do your part. And then I have a question after that because it
Great, alright.
really relates more to that. So.
And, and Marcus, I think you're going to kick this part off. Is that correct?
Yes, I am. And let me get this, this
Okay.
set up here.
Thank you Gretchen. That, that made up for a good transition.
I'm going to share my screen here. And let's go to View Present. Okay. Start from the beginning here. So as Dr. Witherspoon mentioned, we were committed to returning to a different ETHS. And say, well, where did that come from? We started the school year off with, with, with an all-staff meeting sometime in late August. And we had the pleasure of having Calvin Terrell with us. Calvin does a lot of our equity work and a lot of our work is just helping students and staff experience their humanity and recognize the humanity in others. And we started the year with recognizing loss. And we just kind of wanted to give space to our staff to, to talk, to process and to grieve. And little did we know, just even at that time, how much more loss we would experience as the year progressed. But during that presentation, when Calvin's talking, the staff, they're chatting in the chat, using the chat feature. And there was some conversation amongst our staff, our teachers, who said, I hope that we use this opportunity to reimagine our school, to possibly come back to a different place than we left. And that this would be, this is a call to change. And I expressed to the staff and the information that I'm about to share with you, that I was reading that in the chat and my heart knew that they were telling the truth. And they, and it resonated with their truth, but my mind had no idea what they were like, what, what, what that could be. Like just the logistics and the, the vision of what that was at the time. So we, we kind of stuck with, that, that stuck with me. And as administrators and staff, we began to just kind of talk about and share like what, what could we do, where we could be. And we did land on, land in a place that I think really, you know, positions ETHS to continue to be as progressive into the 21st century as any other school. And really excited to report the changes that we will be integrating and implementing in the fall as we expect to resume to be fully in person. And so we didn't want to return to business as usual for sure. We wanted to make sure that we seized on the opportunity to pause and to reflect. And we also knew that we wanted to come back, having to be compassionate and empathetic and thoughtful about how do we return back after experiencing a global pandemic? How do we return back to school after grieving the losses of so many in, in our own community, but also the losses in the, on the national level where, where there, there's been so much discourse around George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery and just one more today, one more name to add today. And so we, we knew that we wanted to come back, putting our humanity first and not the logistics of, of where we left. And so as we thought about our collective humanity, what that would mean for students and what would mean for staff, we came back with these changes, knowing that these changes would, would serve us best in the short term, but also would give us an opportunity to really envision a different ETHS for the future. So we started with some low-hanging fruit. And that is, you know, no student's going to come back with hanging tardy detentions or detentions or, or anything like that. We're wiping all of those clean. Every student will come back with a fresh start. We're also, before we left, we knew that our tardy procedure was just awful. You know, a student was late to class, the student had to find a safety member who had to print a slip to take to class. And sometimes, you know, safety's busy moving around and it just added more loss to instructional time. And so we had a committee working to revise that last school year, thinking that we would implement those changes the current school year, not knowing that we would be in a pandemic. But now that we're going to return, we'll be implementing the changes that that committee recommended for the, for the fall 2021 and the 2022 school year. And, you know, this is a, a change where teachers will now report tardies themselves and kids can just go right to class. I should also say this about discipline. We will also be engaging a much more progressive approach to discipline. I shared this, we've been sharing this kind of ongoing with, with the board and with the public. We've shared it with the staff, Dr. Witherspoon and I have shared it with the deans. And so I will, Dr. Robinson and I have been having lots of conversations about how do we, how do we engage? How do we take restorative practice to the next level when we get back? And so I'm really excited about that vision as well. And then we, we decided to eliminate semester exams. And, but this does not mean, well, I should say it like this. Teachers will still be able to give multi-unit summative assessments at the end of the term. What it means is that we will not be using a whole week for teachers to do that during an 85-minute period as we transition to the block. Should a teacher choose to do that, they can do that. So it speaks to the college readiness piece that so many people were concerned about. We are definitely thinking about that. But it also speaks to that some schools and some of our teachers will engage more project-based learning, summative efforts, and that's okay too. So we are giving instructional time back to teachers by eliminating semester exams in the way that we used to do them. Also, we're transitioning to the block schedule. I have to admit to you that ETHS has been talking about a block for literally 20 years. And that's not a hyperbole. That's like legitimate, like truth. We've been talking about a block schedule for 20 years. We've been talking about a block schedule since I graduated from U of I and started working at ETHS in the Ince Department. That's how long it's been. And a former administrator texted me and said, you really took a global pandemic for ETHS to move to a block schedule? So actually it did. You know, we had so many concerns, so many technical concerns around the block. We knew that we wanted to slow the day down. We knew that we wanted our teachers to be able to go deeper in content. But there were some technical challenges with the number of periods and elective requirements. And if we got rid of a period, what did we do to electives and all of that? It took the pandemic for us to be able to think to ourselves like, wait a minute. We could do a block with, 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 with the periods that we currently have if we fixed lunch. And many staff members, you know, faculty members will have heard me say, I'm done talking about a block. I don't want to think about a block. No one mentioned a block to me. It's, it's over and done. But Dr. Scott Bramley dared to talk to me about block schedule one more time. And what he was able to do was building and building our master's schedule. He was able to address the technical concerns that we had. So we reassembled a group of folks to help us talk through. Bill Farmer was one of them. And we still had some technical things that just wasn't comfortable with me. Dr. Bramley was able to address those concerns and then it just came down to preference. And I'm like, okay, now, you know, teachers preferring or people preferring a certain type of, you know, sequence and contact, having daily contact and all of that. And like, we can, we can provide the kind of professional development that we need to, to address those concerns. So we believe that it's important to slow the day down. It's important to dig deeper and to content. You know, give to kids where there'll be 10-minute passing periods. Kids will be able to, you know, to decompress a little bit before they go to the next periods. And we surveyed the teachers and staff in the fall. We also surveyed kids in the fall when we were looking at the, at the schedule just as a possibility. And, you know, our teachers have, have been split on this, but I did ask the faculty to consider it just to try. Right? Let's, let's give this a try because we need to, to, it helps us to reset the conversation about instruction, moving to a new instructional model. We can talk about social and emotional learning. We can talk about equity. We can talk about literacy. We can talk about tech integration. We can talk about all of the things that we know that we need to talk about and continue to talk about. But it, it puts all of us at, 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 at the same place to be able to integrate all of these things in the right way. So this is why we're moving to the block. I'm excited about the, the new pace of the school. And we have already assembled a group of people, a group of staff members who will also help us assess the success of the block. So this is an opportunity, right? Change. This is, this is us sort of seizing a moment, taking advantage of where we are locally and where we are within, within our school context to, to change. And so we're going to continue to gather feedback from students, faculty, staff, all stakeholders, you name it, moving forward as we implement these, these, these changes for the fall. We're also changing lunch because of the block. You know, we have traditionally had, certain cafeterias were designated for certain groups of kids. And now our freshmen and sophomores, freshmen have, used to be by themselves, sophomores and juniors were there. Where the sophomores were together and juniors and seniors were together. But now freshmen and sophomores will be together and, and, you know, we are just kind of working through those logistics. And all four cafeterias will now be online for lunch. We haven't done that for, for some time now to accommodate not just the, the growing student body, but also to accommodate for the lunches with, within the block schedule. Our, we're also implementing sophomore study halls, freshman and sophomore advisory study halls. We've had a FASH. Now we're going to have a SASH sophomore advisory study hall because we know that this year's current freshmen, there's a lot that we wanted to do with them that they, you know, I want to say that they didn't get, but there's a lot that we need to rehearse with them. And so we're in, we're adjusting our plant, our planning and adjusting the structure so that the class of 2024 and the class of 2025 will have all of the, the necessary tools that they need to make the kinds of post-secondary choices that they think is right for them and their family. Also with the block, we were able to provide a, the, the kinds of opportunities for kids to take as many science electives. We have always denied kids who could, because of the, the limitations with the schedule. So now all of the kids who wanted to take, you know, our popular science electives are going to be taking those electives. And even all of the kids who are, you know, who, you know, we've also had to, you know, maneuver some things to be able to get kids, all of the kids in the biology, we're able to do that. So this, the, the way we've restructured has really helped us in so many other technical ways. Last thing I'll just say is that we hired a new director of special education, Dr. Deanna Lewis. And we hired her to the resignation of Dr. Lene Walls. And Dr. Lewis has just come on board and done a wonderful job. And in one year, she has already restructured special education where we are adjusting our service delivery model in special ed. It's something that our teachers in special education have been asking for, for a long time. And, you know, the, the conversation was a little bit challenging because you changed to one, one service delivery model in special ed. And you could, you know, the, the FTE for the district could just be astronomical. We could have, we would need it to, could have, could have had, had to had 10 heads in the, in the department. But we didn't do that. Through Dr. Lewis's approach and through her, the sectioning needs of the kids and the vision that she's created for the department, with the department, we were able to assign teachers to these roles that you see here, where teachers who are focused on teaching can teach, case managers can case manage. And a lot of our staff who were doing both and having, having challenges doing both can now focus on one thing and provide better services to the kids and the families. Our special education teachers have been communicated with. They know what their roles will be for next year. And it's a very positive change and long overdue in the special ed department. She's also working to revise our day school. We have, she's been working to make sure that our entrance and exit criteria for the day school is very clear and very transparent as our students move through the continuum of services and continuum of services in special education. And we'll be, and I'm sure at some point next year, we'll be reporting on all of this as, as well with our special education. So we have been planning for this for a while. You know, we've, we've done our homework in the fall. We've done the surveys. And, you know, this, this was the right time to announce these changes after we, people have, you know, our staff and students and family were informed of how we would end the year. Now we, now we focused on summer school. Now we have plans for the fall. And these things were all adjusted as we have spent a good portion of our year trying to get our, our ducks in a row and all of our i's dotted and t's crossed as we looked for a new vision, looked to a new vision for ETHS. We're supporting our staff with, with, with all of the changes. And we know that because there's so much happening, this is not really an ideal time to do so much change. But if not now, then when? And so this is, this is, this is the direction that we've elected to move in. And that's that. So now we can take your questions about the fall, Gretchen.
I just unmute myself there. First of all, just applause to you. I won't use the little emoticon because I really, I love the way that you, we, the collective we, I'll claim credit, has seized the moment here to really do some terrific things. So I don't want to just, you know, repeat everything you've said. It's, it's all really good. I mean, it really, really is. And so I'm jumping to a question that didn't really come up at all in your presentation. So I hope you don't take offense because I really do applaud what you presented. And I just don't have any particular criticisms that spring to mind now. Not to say that there won't be discussion and I'm sure more information forthcoming, you know, around all those various topics, but it's, it's really terrific. And I too remember that we have been talking about block scheduling for, ever since I've been on the board. So I think that's a great idea. My question though, actually relates to, sort of indirectly, to the kinds of things you're talking about doing. And that is this expected influx of funding coming from the federal. I say expected because I, I think we need to be clear that it's not exactly in our pockets yet. And the federal government has allocated a ton of money to education. And there's been tentative allocations made to districts within our state. My very limited understanding as a school board member who's read some stuff and done some webinars is that the state, the state gets the money. The state being, you know, the State Board of Ed or the state government. And it comes from them to the districts within Illinois. That's my understanding. That's my understanding. The timing is less than clear to me. And, and the amounts, um, the most recent amounts that I saw, have us getting, there's ESSER, the Emergency Schools and Secondary Emergency Relief Act, or whatever that acronym stands for, something along those lines. Has us getting, there's supposed to be three stages of this money with the first chunk being a few hundred thousand dollars, the second chunk, a little over a million, and the third chunk being somewhat over two million. So, you know, it's a cup, it's a few million in here supposedly. And then the discussion around, uh, around what to do with this money is not just a blank check particularly. There are some very specific, um, um, focus areas. And strong suggestions, mandates even, about how the money is supposed to be used. And, and I would argue that many of the things that you've just talked about for the fall involve, would, would be consistent with these kinds of ideas about how the money should be spent. And so as a school board member, um, I think that's great. Um, and I think it's important that going forward, we hear from you about, you know, specifically how what we're doing with this money relates to those ideas. Um, and I would love to see that sort of tied up a little bit as just a, as a, as a structure and as a, as a way to understand what we're doing. I think we are hugely you, Marcus, your Eric, your whole team. Pete, not to leave you out. Mary, the financial yay. I think all of you are enormously creative, but the fact is there, there is this structure. We're not just pulling stuff out of the air is, is all I'm trying to say. So does that make sense that we should try and sort of tie that up as a framework and, 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 and we talk about that within that framework, not as a limiting thing, but as a, as an opportunity for us to really seize a moment.
Sure. Yeah. Mary, Eric, did you all have anything to add today?
Yeah, I love that. Uh, absolutely agree with that. And, and think of the framework as even a little larger than, 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 and imagine when I say only what we're, we're talking about for the fall, which is massive. Because it even includes summer school, for example. It includes things like we're going to add a social worker at the day school because we want to make the day school more therapeutic, having to deal with, with, with issues that have started to emerge with, with the pandemic. It'll have to do with more reading and literacy teachers so that we, we can, uh, help students catch up. So it'll be everything that Marcus just outlined. But, but, but think of it as a big framework. What effect has the pandemic had on young people? What effect has it had on education? And how do we, uh, direct that money, uh, to, to making the biggest impact? To, to address, uh, issues that have come up, uh, with the pandemic and with student needs. And if we, if we think of it that way, uh, so it's about 3.7 million ultimately, eventually. And remember, we've also incurred and are incurring a lot of, you know, you heard about all these PPE, PPE kits that we're putting in every classroom and all these computer stations that we're putting in microphones and everything. That's all COVID expense too. So, so, you know, we've been incurring a lot of expense and, and we, and, and we also wanted to, to direct it in, in the direction that you just said. So I think the, the short answer for me is yes. It is a framework from which we and the board ought to be thinking and operating.
Yeah, I just think that some of the document, you know, some of the reporting I've seen on this out of ISB, you know, their, their four pill, like the trauma-informed kind of services is one of the pillars. The, um, you know, the inner, the, um, sort of data reporting at intervals is a, is an aspect of it. The, um, rethinking all the discipline stuff and, you know, I mean, all these things are, are part of that package. And I think it would be helpful to sort of highlight how we, very specifically how we are aligned with those principles. You know, I mean, it just, it, it gives us a framework for this, um, ongoing check-ins that we're doing around the changes induced by the pandemic and how we operate. And, and I think it also is important to just emphasize that, um, because some people seem to think, wow, you've got, um, an extra few million. And so what exactly are you doing with that right now? And it's important to understand it's not exactly here yet.
I, I, the only thing I would really add is, um, I mean, in my mind, the plan was always to let the academic side do the planning for the needs and then we come together with the financial side. The, uh, the third part, which is the biggest chunk, as far as I know, will be available to start the application for that money, uh, July 1. So I feel like it coincides well with kind of shoring things up for the next school year. I, I don't know that I've seen what the duration will be, but I will say for, even from a year ago, when we got the first announcement that our aid was $290,000, they gave us 18 months, I believe, to spend that. And when I think even further back to the, um, gosh, I can't remember the acronym, but around 2010, uh, that recovery period, ARA, I think it was A R R A. We had well over a year to spend that aid. And in that one, there were, there were some programmatic monies. We were allowed to use some, some money for some capital recovery type things and, um, but it was a good period. It was at least 18 months, I think.
I think you actually might even have like three year. I think it's, it's multiple.
I'm hoping, yeah. I don't know the duration for the big chunk yet.
Yeah, I think it, I think it is multiple years for the larger piece. So, um,
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And I'm, I'm certainly probably the least academic person on this phone call. But, but, uh, I, it seems to me that the duration will help, right? With the recovery for the student's sake. You, you don't want really a one and done is my guess. And so I like that duration of, of the aid.
Well, as important as all the PPE, for example, is you don't want to be caught in a position where you're just forcing to buy a bunch of face masks. Because you have to spend the money by a date certain. And instead, we would much rather put a, a chunk of this money towards sort of substantive and program, programmatic stuff. I, I just want to wrap up my comments here by, by just reiterating, it should be really obvious to anybody who listens to this board meeting or sees any reporting of it, that, um, ETHS has every intention of being actually in person in the fall. And, you know, I think people keep sort of asking and questioning that, or I have seen and heard people ask and question that. And, um, I think there's this certain frustration because nobody in life can guarantee anything from day to day, right? And so I'm a lawyer or I used to practice as one. And, you know, I'm not going to get caught promising something I can't deliver. But on the other hand, you know, obviously we want to be in school in person and full time and barring some other crazy different kind of pandemic circumstance, we're going to be there. And I, I, I just wish that, you know, my, my wish for our community is to appreciate the good faith that, um, we have and, and our staff, our administration have in working through this all year long. I mean, we are over a year now and the work has been extraordinary. And it, it's just wrongheaded to think that we haven't had the best interests of our students and our community and their health and safety at heart. And I, I just, I don't often go on quite that long about anything, but, you know, we're, we're past a year, so I just had to get it out there and make it really clear. Thanks, everybody.
I agree with that 100% Gretchen. It's, it has been, uh, quite a year. And, and if we review where, where we've been and, and the steps we've taken and where we're going, we're clearly transitioning. Planning and transitioning toward opening full, fully opening in the fall. So, um, all of that, that this, these plans, Marcus, um, that you just laid out, just really tells me that we are going to reopen and will be a whole different ETHS. So I'm really excited about, about what you, what you laid out, the block schedule. I too have been hearing a lot about block schedules for a lot of years and I just never believed it would ever happen. It was just one of those, um, aspirational goals that folks talked about, but, um, this is really good and this is very exciting. And it's really exciting that we could actually have funding to do some of this. You know, how many times do we try to take on something without funding and then we, we are needing to be creative and try to figure it out. So, um, so this is really powerful.
Pat? So quickly, I just want to thank Gretchen for her comments and agree with her 100% in terms of how hard the team has worked and how thoughtfully, um, with the kid, with the students and their families and our staff ever centered. Um, I think you, you can't, I, those in the community, I don't think really can fully appreciate. And I always, when people say, has it been a hard year as a school board member, I said, not compared to what our staff is doing. They've just gone above and beyond over and over again. So, um, I want to definitely, um, second that. And also to say, you know, Governor Whitmer in Michigan, just a couple of days ago, said high school students should be fully remote. So I, I don't mean to say that we want that. God knows we don't, but things happen. They're having a terrible outbreak right now. So I, I, I think that we just, we all have to, as Carnea said last time, we have to give each other grace. And, um, I think that's really important. So, um, thank you, Gretchen. But my, my question was pretty specific, Marcus. And just, I love the changes you've outlined. I think they're great. I'm just wondering, uh, to what extent, and again, I know you're thinking this, but I'd just love to hear about it. What's the PD plan? Because I've seen, uh, I've seen districts go to block scheduling and it sounds great. And the teachers don't know how to use 85 minutes. Uh, it's different. So I'm just wondering what's, what's up in that area.
That's a great question. Um, so that was one of my, the promises that I made to the staff is that we would provide a robust, uh, professional development for them. And some of them would say, you know, what would really be great if we could do it, you know, start it before the end of this school year? We said, absolutely. So coming up at the end of the month, I believe it's April something, the Monday to 26th, we will have our, begin our, our professional development for the block. Dr. Scott Bramley and Pete, uh, Dr. Davis are, are come, are have a group of folks that they've been pulling together who have either taught in the block in another school or, and, and have a menu of, of, of agenda items for the very next all staff meeting to start the professional development process for teaching and using the 85 minutes. And, uh, that's to start. And Pete, um, you want to pick up on that, like some of what you will be working on with the department chairs? Before they leave and what we plan to do for, for next school year?
Yeah. Uh, so we're dedicating our Friday meetings with department chairs toward this PD planning that will be content specific, you know, by department as well as general, right? We have to have general, but we also have to have content specific. We're also expanding the use of Mondays, our PD Mondays. So that only will we provide professional development before the school year is out. We will provide ongoing, uh, professional development on the block. And we'll have different topics, you know, wellbeing in the block, assessment in the block, different things. So teachers can cycle through different modules. And that's all being planned, uh, shortly. We also, we also are looking toward, uh, for, forward to the summer to provide some curricular development time. Cause we also want, we also realize we'll have to adjust the curriculum, uh, to be able to meet the needs of our students, both, uh, in, in, you know, in, in the in-person instruction post, hopefully post pandemic, but also the realities of not just teaching in the block, but teaching coming off of the year, uh, and, uh, the year we've had.
Thanks, guys. No surprise. You are already on it. Just wanted to hear it.
Can I jump in? I, I just want to say that this is a smart plan. I mean, as you sort of laid it out from the, the hybrid to the summer school to the fall in stages, you know, of coming in, getting that right, adding a little bit more in the summer, getting that, mastering that, and then preparing for reopening. That was one of the best practices in reopening that, um, that I held on to that was just, um, said over and over again, open smartly, you know, open, master some things, figure out what you need to do different. You know, fine tune whatever's not working and then keep adding, keep staging, keep opening until you get to that full open, because this is not like anything we've ever done before. And what we saw earlier on in COVID, when those schools reopened, they had to quickly shut back down because they didn't have a plan, because they, they didn't think it through. So this is just smart to me. This just makes complete sense. And, you know, I'm, I'm just excited by the innovation and the creativity and just the thoughtfulness that went into all of this from the very beginning of what's going to happen. Well, it all, it all started with our e-learning. So let me go back, you know, to that point and how you rolled that out. And then now the hybrid on Wednesday and then what's happening in the summer and then finally the fall. So, um, it's impressive in my opinion. Good job.
Thank you, Monique. Impressive and caring. Liz?
Um, yeah. Thank you guys for your thorough presentation. I loved hearing about it and especially I'm excited for everybody returning to school in the fall. I was thinking about our families who chose not to come back for hybrid learning. And we know that many of them are families of color. And I was thinking about, um, worried that their reasons for not returning for hybrid could still exist in the fall. And we could very well have many families who don't want to return in the fall for whatever their personal reasons are, or if they don't feel that it's safe. And I wonder, um, what you all think about how we can make them feel comfortable and make them feel welcome and safe in returning to school in the fall.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely be lifting that up as we, um, talk about our messaging for the fall and, um, also be working with the medical advisory group on that. Because, you know, for many families of color, um, you know, vaccines are a thing, you know? And I share it with the staff and with the medical advisor group. My, I, my great granddad was a part of that Tuskegee syphilis experiment and so was his brother. So, um, I think that we will be working with whatever families of, of color, whatever family needs to make sure that they are are comfortable as possible returning in the fall, but addressing the, the threat of, of race and racism with vaccines and, uh, with the disproportionate, uh, means to which COVID has impacted families of color. That's something that we'll be, we'll be discussing this spring, um, so that we can work this summer to, to, um, address those, um, those fears. And I know our medical advisory board, um, will be, you know, um, they've offered to help with our staff and, um, this was definitely, this will definitely be a topic that we can also ra- raise with them as, um, we continue our partnership.
I, I want to build on that, Marcus. I, they're going to be a lot of help. And, 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 uh, as, while we're working closely with them now, as we lift up their work and their voice, I think it's going to help a lot of families. Uh, but one of the things that they make clear and Marcus, or Pete, one of you referenced it, I think Pete did about that, that if you are wearing masks and, and social distancing and, and using sanitation, you know, washing your hands. and and social distancing and and using sanitation, you know, washing your hands, things, it really does have a huge safety effect. I mean, as one of you said, they said, you know, that that this gives you the protection that a vaccine gives you if you are really have high fidelity to that. One of the things I anticipate is we will probably still be doing all those mitigations next fall. Even when we go back to a full in person, from what we at least know today in April, it it appears that we will still be doing all of that mitigation. And so we'll not only be communicating it, but we'll also be trying to build in assurances that that we're not getting reckless and 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 we're not doing things that would increase the risk for people. Hopefully, that messaging will 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 help the families a lot.
Thank you.
Eric, that's why I think the staging is so critical. You know, communities of color have to know that you're doing everything you need to do to make the environment safe for them before they come back. So that's the other reason why staging and the progression is so important. Because families will be watching, and they will be paying attention, whether or not they're here at hybrid or not. But they'll be watching to see that by the time they make that decision in fall, that everything has been done that had to be done to make sure not only that they feel safe healthwise, but that when they come back, when their kids come back to school, that they will continue learning at the same rate with the same enthusiasm that they did while they were at home e-learning. So they don't want their kids to slip academically because some of them saw a lot of success e-learning. And they want to capture that and hold on to that. So the changes, Marcus, that you're talking about academically for the fall is critical also to them returning. It's 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 COVID, but it's not just COVID. It is, they've had some success, and they want to hold on to that. So how is are things going to be different, right, for them? So that's why I said it's smart as well. Because Liz, exactly what you raised, they're watching to see how well we do this reopening.
Well said.
Yeah, I thi- I think that that wait and see has already clearly started in communities of color. They are, they are watching us. They may not be as vocal as some of our families, but they're, they're, they're out there. They're watching, they're talking among themselves, and they want to be cared for. They do want their kids to be successful, for sure. All right. Thank you for these, this, this incredible information, such great knowledge. I feel like we have a really good handle on what's coming and and the philosophy and thinking behind it. So thank you for taking the time to talk to us about all those pieces. This is so, this is the most important thing that we are doing right now. Getting ready and preparing and and checking ourselves, asking questions, using our resources, planning for our students to transition back. There's a lot. It's overwhelming in some ways, but I think we've got the minds and the 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 administration and faculty clearly who can do this. So thank you. You've obviously been at this a while. It's impressive. Thank you. All right. Are we ready to move on? Ford? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Holocaust Remembrance Days proclamation. And Jude is going to read this to us. Getting Jude's voice as long as I can.
Thank you, Pat. Holocaust Remembrance Days, April 4th through April 11th, 2021. Whereas from 1933 to 1945, 6 million Jews and 5 million clerics, communists, dissidents, Roma, gays and lesbians, disabled people, Poles, Serbs, and Jehovah Witnesses were murdered in the Holocaust as part of a systemic program of genocide. Whereas the students and staff of Evanston Township High School should always remember the atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such sorrows are never repeated. Whereas the ETHS community should continually dedicate itself to the principle of equal justice for all people, remain eternally vigilant against tyrants and hate speech, and recognize the bigotry provides, that bigotry provides a breeding ground for tyranny to flourish. Therefore, we, the District 202 School Board, proclaim that in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in the hope that we will always strive to overcome prejudice and inhumanity through vigilance, education, and resistance, proclaim that April 4th through April 11th, the year 2021, be hereby designated as Holocaust Remembrance Days at Evanston Township High School.
Thank you. Thank you, Jude. Really appreciate you reading that. All right. We are at comments from the public. Dr. Davis.
Thank you. We have three comments from the public. Public comments are three minutes each. I will read those three comments into the record. First comment is from Svetlana Beckman. Dear Doctors Witherspoon and Campbell, members of the District 202 Board of Education, my junior is looking forward to being in the building, seeing his classmates and interacting with his teachers. I was pleased to learn that ETHS established a medical advisor group comprising physicians, administrators, and representatives from each ETHS union. I'm writing to gain transparency into your process for, one, increasing the amount of time students spend in the building during the balance of school year, and two, implementing full in-person instruction in the fall following school year. Specifically, I want to know the metrics, community spread, teacher and student vaccination rates, etc. Will guide your decisions. I urge you to create concrete benchmarks in place of generalized and subjective criteria currently on offer. I was delighted to learn that the additional federal funds will be available to District 202. What are your plans for spending those funds? I wish you luck in the hybrid and look forward to hearing about your plans to fully reopen the fall of 2020. One, best regards, Svetlana Beckman. Second public comment is from Kara and Dan Rudolph. Dear Doctors Witherspoon and Campbell, members of the District 202 Board of Education, thank you for attempting a hybrid model this week. It's a step in the right direction in the great dress rehearsal for the return to school in the fall. Well, when will an announcement of reopening plans for the fall happen? Can we expect to receive more communication soon surrounding the reopening plans for the fall? I think parents deserve more updates, especially with the high tax dollars we pay at town hall. Could be a great way to communicate the needs, all the needs that need to be shared. When the intention to move to a five-day full in-person option for all students with access to in-person teaching for all classes. We used to have our kids attend a mostly full day on Mondays before this pandemic. What will the COVID-19 federal money be used for? There's been lots of COVID-19 funding issued to District 202, including the recent 3.7 million mental health supports. How will students that need mental health supports be identified? What percentage of COVID-19 federal money will go to mental health supports? What additional staff will be hired? And what new programs and procedures will be put in place? How will the plan change as students are vaccinated? How will you receive that data? Thank you, Kara and Dan Rudolph. The third public comment is from Kate O'Brien. Dear Doctors Witherspoon and Campbell, members of the District 202 Board of Education, thank you for starting to bring kids back to the classroom this week. My daughter is very excited. I hope this time in the building can increase, given the percent of students choosing to come back. Can we assume a full five-day week reopening in the fall? I understand that getting teachers and staff vaccinated has been the critical piece in your decision-making. Beyond that, students 16 and older will soon have opportunity to be vaccinated, and it is likely that students age 12 to 15 will also have that opportunity this summer. Research tells us that parents' opinions of school safety is highly influenced by school administration. Please help students, parents, teachers, and staff recognize that school is a safe place to be. Thank you, Kate O'Brien, ETHS parent. And that concludes this evening's public comment.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Davis. And while you're still on, we're at FOIA's. We have one, two, three, four. Is that correct?
Yes, we have FOIA's, four FOIA's, one from the product analysis team, one from Herrmann, one from Cochrane, and one from Gomez, the responsibility packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no questions, I'm going to move on to board committee reports. Are there, I know there was an EdRed meeting. Are there other board, board committee reports? Gretchen? You're muted, Gretchen.
I I muted unmuted and then muted again. Mary, I think, was also at the member meeting on Friday, which included all sorts of, and Pat was too. I see her hand waving as I'm watching. Sorry, I didn't see absolutely everybody there. And there was a lot of really interesting financial information presented, which I didn't really want to get into, in part because it's hard to summarize. And Mary and Pat could certainly chime in if they wished. We are supposed to get the hard copies of the materials that were presented, and so I can share that with the board when we get them. Mostly what I wanted to say is we have concluded a process to hire a new executive director for EdRed. I think most of you now know that a really wonderful executive director, Sarah Hartwick, departed after about two and a half years. She was, she was a great catch while we had her, and we knew she'd move on. And we have now hired a wonderful and energetic young woman named Bridgette Everson, who most recently was working as a staffer for Representative Dittich. And her first day was today. So I just wanted to share that with everybody, and hopefully we'll keep EdRed on a good path. And and we'll share all the details in that presentation with you with the material, if that's okay with Pat and Mary.
Anything to add, Pat or Mary?
Just that I would never take on the summary of that meeting. There's a lot of really, I mean, really interesting information about Moody's and how they're treating, you know, ratings and the state budget. It's, it was very, very informative, but I couldn't even begin to explain it. I would turn it to Mary, perhaps.
It's a good thing Gretchen's on the inside. But but I will say, Pat, you you did remind me about the Moody's conversation. Just kind of at a really high level for the board. There was some discussion about how Moody's rating service is going to, or maybe they've already implemented, how they're changing some of their ratings. And a rating's important when we issue our debt, which we usually do bonds, but sometimes we do debt certificates. In the past, we have, we have gotten ratings from Moody's every few years. And as you all know, we're really proud to say that we're at the highest Moody's rating level that you can be. And the reason that that's important, other than saying we're the highest we can be, is that you get money, you get to borrow money cheaper if your credit score is better. So the the short end of it is, with the Moody's changes to how they rate organizations, some organizations may find that they have a slight reduction here or there. But nothing that they've announced so far is anything that we could determine that might put a ding into our rating. Some of the high-level things, for example, there's something called a cash accrual basis of account, a cash basis of accounting versus an accrual basis. We are on the accrual basis. That's what they're recognizing at a little higher level. It says, hey, we got money a month ago, even though our year ended. That was for last year. We're going to recognize that. So there was nothing that I've heard in the presentation or otherwise that I think would cause any sort of downgrade. And we did not get notified by Moody's of that potential anytime this year.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's always good news. Okay, great. All right. So we are at a student board report. Carolina.
Hi, everybody. So today, we actually have had two weeks off of student union meetings. So we haven't, you know, we were a little bit dusty right now. We haven't been, you know, doing much, but we're coming back to just continue with our, like, little committees that we've been working on, which are working on kind of making a student handbook to make information from administrators and students more easily understandable to students. And then the second thing is working on how to implement, you know, better mental health days into students' like absences. Because we know we can't give off like two days of the school year because, you know, there's required amount of days that students have to go to school. So we're just trying to figure out a way to kind of like go around that and give, you know, students individual mental health days. And just figuring out how to do that. In addition to another student brought to us, just like furthering the all-gender bathrooms and figuring out how to make them more easily accessible to transgender and non-binary students. Yes, in terms of me, I'm very excited to graduate. I know that the seniors, you know, hadn't felt very special this year. I know that there was a whole lot of stuff going on. So, you know, some stuff slipped through the cracks, but I know that a lot of people are happy to see a lot of the stuff that's going on now with the T-shirts and the signs and, you know, nearing the end of the year. There's just a lot of stuff that's been coming for us. So we're very grateful for it and excited. And I'm very happy to be able to have an in-person commencement being, you know, privileged enough to even go there because I don't have any sicknesses or, you know, I'm healthy enough to do that. So I'm very excited for that, and I know a lot of other seniors are as well. And, you know, this has been a tough year for everybody and students and teachers especially. So I just, I know that, I feel like for a lot of students, it's like you're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. We're going into a semi-normal summer where a lot of people are getting vaccinated. And I'm working on too directing YAMO. We're doing a virtual YAMO where we're recording everything. And we're, we have to record most of the things outside socially distanced so we can see people's faces. But, you know, we're figuring out ways around a lot of stuff. And it's just been a stressful thing because of how much I have to just kind of keep in mind and and look over. But also just a very good outlet because I know that arts and creativity has been kind of halted in this pandemic. So it's been an awesome experience for me, and I really love it. And that, you think?
Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful. All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Witherspoon. You muted, Dr. Witherspoon.
I'll start over. Good. Carnea, it it's really fun to hear a senior leader speak from a senior perspective as we enter the final weeks of the school year. And it's true every year for seniors, but just I'm so reminded what an exciting time in life it is for all of you. And and also how much you have learned about yourselves and what you're capable of having to endure a pandemic during your senior year of high school. So it's been a great senior class, and they still have many great things ahead of them. Very exciting. Tomorrow is exciting because we will have the most students in this building at ETHS that we have had in over a year. It's actually a non-attendance day, except the juniors, it will be, the junior class will be coming in to take the SAT. And we are expecting, you know, we have over 50, 60 rooms ready for them. We're expecting hundreds of students to to come into this building bright and early tomorrow morning. And it it it's very exciting to think about that and realize that we're finally turning that corner. But on Wednesday, the 13th, I, I'm sorry, the Wednesday, the 14th, after tomorrow, we will be welcoming our first round of students for hybrid instruction. We've talked about it tonight, but I want to put it in the context. Yes, students are going to start filling the the hallways in the classrooms of ETHS. So it's a big week. So it's a big week. Um, uh, doesn't mean our students haven't already been active, and I want to give kudos. Uh, uh, we've already put this information out, uh, but I just want to lift up again that eight of our students uh reached the Academic Challenge State Finals. Five of our students have placed in the top ten at the Health Occupations and and Students of America State Leadership Conference. Two of our students have qualified for the Illinois Junior Academy of Science Fair's state finalists. Two, uh, our mock trial team won the Illinois State Bar Association State Competition. Uh, and twenty-three of our students have achieved in the top tw- ten of finalists uh a- at the the DECA State Conference. Uh, just a reminder uh that ETHS students have not let up uh even even while having to figure out how to navigate all this through a pandemic. Uh, our our Family Action Network, FAN, is sponsoring an event this Thursday night, the fifteenth. Uh, it 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 features Michael Seider, and the uh title is The Fight for Free Speech. Ten Cases That Define Our First Amendment Freedoms. It's virtual, and it starts at seven PM uh via Zoom and information, and the link is on our website. ETHS continues to host many events uh virtually. And one of them I want to mention is Wild Kid Academy. Uh, the next one will be on Saturday, April twenty-fourth. Uh, and we encourage people, uh, students to participate in that. And uh our next Family Talk event, and all families of ETHS are uh invited and encouraged to participate in it. It too will be a virtual event, uh, but the topic is Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Program. Uh, really, uh, a meaningful program. I hope uh students and families will tune in. It's on Thursday, April the twenty-ninth. And that one starts at six thirty in the evening. And finally, a a reminder that there will be no school on Friday, April twenty-third. And that will be a non-attendance day, and that concludes my report.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. All right, so we're at items for action. The first item is the cons- is the consent agenda. And um, that consists of approval of asbestos abatement contract. There's an attachment in the um agenda. Approval of carpet contract bid, also an attachment. Approval of sole source purchase, uh, Siemens Industry memorandum is available. Um, approval of minutes from March eighth, twenty twenty-one, close session minutes. March eighth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting minutes. March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, special meeting minutes. Approval of bills, treasurer's report. And the personnel agenda, I'm gonna pull out um the stiping stipends for um voting separately. So the personnel agenda consists of professional staff certified. Um. Appointments to staff certified, leave of absence, maternity, paternity, uh resignation, safety, and retirement safety.
And and don't forget, I just want to be sure folks know, and the resolution that grants tenure appointments.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
It's there, but I just want to be sure that I that I pointed it out.
Yes, resolution granting tenure appointments. Absolutely. We heard some wonderful, we heard that, I heard about that earlier. So could I have a motion and second for um approval, please?
So moved. Back in.
Roll call, please.
La Day.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mansell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
To Terj.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. All right, and now uh voting separately, I um personnel agenda, change in status stipends. Can I have a motion and second for that approval, please?
Again.
Roll call, please.
Livingston.
Yes.
Mansell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Stay.
Rolowitz.
Yes.
To Terj.
Yes.
La Day.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So we are at old and new business items. Does anybody have old or new business items to present? Hearing none. Could I have a motion for, no, I don't need a motion. Um, closing of the board, um, how do we do it?
You need a motion.
I can.
Move.
And this is Gretchen's sweet spot, right?
All right. Gretchen made the motion. All in favor, say aye. Are you sure, Gretchen? All opposed? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
For the discussion.